...city council meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please rise and we can say a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Schwab.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Althoff.
Here.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
And Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Okay, at this time, I would like to take nominations for the position of mayor.
I would not.
Excuse me, it's my understanding before you move to point two, I can say something, is that right or wrong? As a citizen, do I have that right?
No, council comments is I had never seen.
No, I disagree with you, Mr. Manager. It says right on the bottom of this page, "Any person who wishes to speak on any item included on the printed meeting agenda may do so." And this item is on the agenda, you're right. Okay, then I would like you to read this letter too.
Okay. Okay, this letter is dated November 7th, 2013. Dear Lo- dear councilmembers, the recent elections voted more eloquently than have any of us who have addressed the council in the last two years. The votes that Jeff Althoff received show that there are more than a few residents who are concerned with the direction we are currently headed. With this in mind, I ask the council to vote for a new mayor to guide the members in a new direction in the future, respectively, Barbara R. 318 King Street, Lowell.
Okay, my name is Alan Teelander, I live at 802 Hunt Street. And, as you know, I applied to be on the Lowell Light and Power Board. I had a discussion with the mayor over the phone, it was a nice discussion, where he told me that I would not be selected, and went on to explain that what he was looking for was a woman to be on the board. And I thought about that, we ended on an amicable, you know, nice, nice discussion. And I also talked with Mark Howe for a little bit, and it was a really good discussion. But I got home and I thought, did he really say what I thought he did? So I sent him an email, and he replied back. I asked him, I said, "Did you really say that you wanted a woman on this, to fill this position?" He wrote back saying, "Yes, he did." He had consulted with Mark Howe, Greg Pierce, and Canfield, Greg Canfield. And so that's three officials of Lowell and one board member, all discriminating against me based on my gender. I, yeah, we, tonight, I wanted to just say this before you voted for the next mayor because we have four people now in an official capacity that have endorsed, basically endorsed discrimination, and any discrimination in my mind is discrimination in any way, whether it's race, gender, ethnic, whatever, it's all discrimination. So now, the city council is going to vote for a mayor, and if they vote for this mayor, they are also now culpable to gender discrimination. And I also have, I've been in contact with the Detroit office of the ACLU, just so you know, whether they're going to get involved or not, I don't know, it's up to them, but I did contact them. So you take your vote, and we'll see, see whether there's four more people involved in this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something too.
Tony Ellison, 407 North Division. I was at the last city council meeting, I believe that Alan made his statements about the voting, the Proposition 3, I believe it was, and somehow he tied that into the old boys' club at the Lowell Light and Power and the city council, and I don't know how he made that, that jump, because my understanding was the Proposition 3 had to do with the ten-year versus ninety-nine-year leases on things. So I'm thinking that he really doesn't understand some of the things that he's talking about. And if he wants to be on the city, or the Lowell Light and Power, my opinion, that's requires a lot of thought and thinking, and he's not making a lot of really wonderful connections with things. And if he was on that board, I really have a lot of problem with somebody like him being on that board, so I would very much like to have him excluded from consideration for the board. Thank you.
Can I explain that? I think he twisted it.
Um, Madam Chair, just a-
Madam Chair, can I explain that? He twisted that.
Point of order, the agenda item is the election of the mayor, it's not the appointments. The appointments will come up at a later time, and perhaps that discussion would be better served at that point in time.
Well, he just twisted what I said.
And I think that when the agenda item is appropriate, then that would be the opportunity to have that discussion. I'm just trying to guess through the agenda to the appropriate time zone.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, I would like to ask for nominations for the position of mayor.
I'd like to nominate Jim Hodges as mayor of the city of Lowell.
In no second.
Okay, I have a second. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Mayor, for Hodges as mayor?
So moved.
And a second?
In a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Mayor Hodges.
And the next item is Mayor Protown, are there any nominations for Mayor Protown?
I'll nominate Sharon Ellison for Mayor Protown.
Is there a second for the-
I'll second.
That's a motion and a second to, for Sharon Ellison. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. That passes five zero. Then, the next item is our procedures, which are in the packet there. I believe this is a copy of what we've done in the last two years.
Yes, I didn't, we, we did a pretty thorough review about two years ago on these, and I took a look at them prior to setting the agenda up, didn't see anything substantial, looked at them in light of the workshop that we just had, and didn't see anything that really needed to be changed, so, nothing is different.
Any discussion or conversation about the procedures?
I would like to mention that on page five, number one, the last sentence, if the majority of the members present vote aye, the ruling of the chair is sustained. The word aye, or a, is contrary to the city charter, which in section 5.5 PEP says that any votes have to be yes or no.
Where, let me see where you're at, I went to page five, but I didn't see- Third paragraph, last-
Ah, yes.
Can we change that now?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that I'm familiar with the chair.
Yes, and so, is, it's acceptable, it will be a technical change, but we'll go through for any of the ayes and change them to yeses if there are any others in there.
I don't think that there are.
And if you don't think there are, uncommonly there aren't.
Well, there you go. You can still check.
Got that amendment?
I move that we adopt the council rules of procedure with a minor correction.
I'll second.
And with that, second, do I ask for, people say yes? Or aye?
I would think yes.
Aye. Okay, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I mean, if I have to go from supporting things to seconding things-
I'll say yes.
We could go from aye to yes.
Yes, we can.
We can.
Okay. Onward to the approval of the agenda, which is in the packet.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, any opposed? Item four is approval, uh, yeah, item, yeah, item four, our numbers are a little out of sequence because of item two. Item four is approval of minutes, and we had three minute, three meetings recently, the regular meeting of December 16th, as well as a closed session on that date, as well as the meeting last week on December 30th, a special meeting. Take those in order, and the regular minutes of the December 16th meeting are in our packet for review, any additions or corrections for those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes for Monday, December 16th as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to support, to approve the minutes of the December 16th regular meeting, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? It passes. The closed session minutes were included in the packet also for December 16th, trust we can have a chance to review those. Motion?
I'll move for approval of the closed session minutes.
I was absent, so, abstain, abstain.
The closed session.
I'm looking for a second.
Second, but I'd like to see it. I think it's, right here. Long time to look at it?
Yeah.
Read it in its entirety. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the closed session minutes, which are in the packet, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Just abstained, I was absent, so.
Case of that, nothing else? All right, and then the special meeting of December 30th, that was a week ago, and those minutes are in the packet also.
Do you propose to accept these minutes?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the minutes of the special meeting held on December 30th, all in favor?
Yes.
That's the line I mentioned, abstain, from, I'm sorry, I cuffed the gun, I was not here on December 30th.
We got it.
Thank you.
So that passes 400. Then item five, approval of the accounts payable, various bills for the month are included there, any questions or concerns?
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable, for this we need a vote, voice vote.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Althoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges.
Yes. Will we go then to citizen comments that do not appear in the agenda, so if any citizen would like to address the council, this will be the time to do that. All right.
Hi, it's Alan Teelander again, I just wanted to, I wish Tony hadn't left, because I love the Ellison's, they treated my daughter so well, and she worked at their video store years ago. I'll never, never be able to give enough gratitude for them for how well they treated my daughter. But Tony was confused, my leap wasn't from Prop 3, my, when I brought up the good old boys' club, which Jim likes to throw at me once in a while, but when I brought that up, I was talking about from city council to the Light and Power Board, and board to board to board, not Prop 3 to Lowell Light and Power. So hopefully, oh, there he is, hopefully he came in in time to hear that, thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Anyone else care to address the council today?
Tony Ellison again, 407 North Division, and I'm not exactly sure what he was talking about, but I would like to say that he, he's thrown a lot of accusations around, and from where I sit, out there, it seems to me that the city council and Lowell Light and Power are doing the very best that they can do for this city. Everybody seems to me to have the best interest of the city at heart, and I'm a little tired of him throwing accusations around, unfounded accusations around, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Anyone else? We'll move on then to item seven, old business, and pending council projects reports, those continue, there's no further updates on those, as I understand.
No further updates.
All right, so we'll move on to item B, the school property sale, and Mark, perhaps you want to give us a little background on this?
This is the issue that's been before us, once before, we advertised for it, we got a bid of a dollar from the school district, this was property that we had promised to transfer to them as a part of the sale of property along the riverfront, and so we had to follow the charter and walk through, walk through charter provisions to ensure that we could execute a quick claim deed and transfer this portion of property to them. It's a 8.3 strip of property that is part of lots 1 and 10, which are part of Avery's subdivision, near the old Lafayette Street, if folks know where that is. And the charter does require, I will say, the charter does require that four out of five council members will be yes, I mean, not aye, yes.
Yes.
Mr. City Manager, is there, because we would not do this when we're supposed to, is there any, are there any drawbacks, or is there going to be any fallout from that, if you're aware?
Um, the only fallout, if we don't follow through, the fallout would be that the property is currently under contract for sale, and it could have a great impact on whether or not that sale actually goes through, and it would have a great impact on the saleability of the property in the future. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns on the council party? Yes, opening up, any public comment on this? Getting that done?
I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 114 to finalize the sale of property to Lowell Area Schools.
Been moved and seconded to-
Seconded, thank you.
I have, I have one concern here, I miss. When we transferred some property back years ago to King Mill, and you abstained from voting because your wife worked for King Mill.
That's true.
Sharon Ellison works for Lowell School System, and I think that's a conflict of interest.
I wrote the charter on that, may I speak?
You may.
And it said if I have financial gain or anything to gain from that, since I've signed to contract, I would have nothing to gain from that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm under contract, I can't get anything from the school for that. I did have a discussion with the city manager about that, to see if I had interpreted the charter correctly, and he gave me the advice at that time that I had, and that I really had no financial gain or any stake in it. I'm doing my job as a councilperson.
I think that's just a question that had to be brought up.
Oh, yeah, I, I questioned it myself too, so I understand why you questioned it, and I did research it, and I did get some opinions on it, so I do feel I can vote fairly on this.
All right. Any other conversation? We've had a motion and a second, all, well, this is a sale, so I think we need a voice vote on this?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Althoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges.
Yes. Passes five zero. Moving on then to item eight, new business, and we have our annual authorization of signatures, and those are before us, indicating who can sign for various items, either be it through the safe deposit box or depository banks, signing checks and so forth, and as well as the list of banks that we do business with. Any concerns or questions there?
I move that we approve the annual authorization of signatures for the bank accounts belonging to the city.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize the signatures for the city bank accounts and designated depositories, and this, we need a voice vote also.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Althoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges.
Yes. Thank you, that passes five zero. Item B is the budget calendar, and that's given to us as a strategy for developing a 2014, 2015 annual budget, and I don't know, Mark, if you have anything to add to that?
Um, this is differed from last year by about three days, I think, and it's just because of the way Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday's fall, but otherwise, I will point out that there are seven meetings or work sessions of the council, where you will be talking about strategic planning leading up to the budget, and then the budget itself, so there are seven opportunities at formal meetings, plus any discussions that you want to have with me, but seven opportunities at formal meetings for the council to have a great impact on our strategic plan and the future of next year's budget. But as you know, the process that we're heading toward is putting together a strategic plan so that by the time we get down to the budget, the budget is just organizing the numbers to match up with what we've already decided, our priorities in terms of strategic plan.
And this our-
But by law, you have to adopt a budget calendar every year, and discuss with the signatures.
And that budget will run July 1st through June 30th.
Correct.
And we're looking at getting that all done by May 19th, so. Any comments or questions on the council's party?
I move that we adopt the budget calendar as presented in our packets.
I'll support.
Been moved and seconded to-
Seconded.
To adopt the budget calendar, all in favor?
Yes.
All right. Five zero. Item C is the long historic museum update, and Ed Olten was unable to make it tonight, and I think you can understand why, and so we will postpone this item to the next meeting in January, if that's true. They do a wonderful job there, and looking forward to that. Moving on then to council comments, and Councilmember Althoff.
Just like to comment on Dan and his crew doing a good job keeping the streets open and, and keep up the good work, thank you.
Uh, Chris Schwab?
I have another report for Fire Department, just hopes and prayers that people keep safe and warm today and the upcoming days.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Nothing to report for either one.
Anything ever, Ellison?
I have nothing to report on any of mine, and I have no comments tonight.
Thank you. Similarly, the various groups, Light and Power Chamber, the Commerce Board, and the Memorial Fund, have not met since we last met, although the Lowell Chamber of Commerce is always busy, getting downtown activities and supporting businesses. And then I might also say that for, for the council, we have a after-holiday holiday party with our various employees and staff of the city, as well as the Light and Power Board and their employees, and so make sure of the RSVP by tomorrow. And moving on then to the managers' report.
Um, I have nothing in the written report, I will say that as Councilmember Althoff had mentioned, Cruz has been out working quite a bit of overtime, keeping the streets cleared, but also we have police officers that are driving in and making it into town through roads that are not allowed out of the country, and, and trolling the streets and keeping traffic flowing, and we certainly appreciate their efforts, and also the office staff who came in today, opened up City Hall when universities and many other places were closing, schools and everything else, and City Hall is open today, and we plan to have it open tomorrow, and that's because people are braving the treacherous roads, unfortunately, we're working with them, the people will find their way, but people are dedicated and coming in and managing the offices, and we really appreciate that, and Suzie, you're a part of that, and you're very much for that. So our staff, all of our staff is working very hard to keep the city fine, and we really appreciate everything that they do.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then to appointments, and you see in the packet that there are many there, and as mentioned, I will have, I'll treat it as a secondary item, the appointment to the Lowell Light and Power Board, but the appointments, I'll read through them, these are all reappointments, I've contacted all these folks that are willing to serve another term, the Airport Board, Tom Grimm, Paul Nichols, and Jim Soul, and then on the Building Authority, Chuck Myers, Downtown Development Authority, Greg Canfield, and April McClure, and Downtown Historic District, Greg Canfield, and the LC TV and Dalla Board, Eddie Sumner, the Lowell Recreation Authority, Barry Beecham is currently serving, and we'd like to reappoint him, Parks and Recreation Commission, Paula Me- Me- Mary-
Mary.
Thank you. So those are the appointments, the people that I've been serving, and I would like to reappoint those particular members, and this we need to vote. Is there a-
I'll make a motion to take, move forward this entire slate that you presented to us.
I'll support.
Been moved and supported.
Or even second.
And second. I got stuck in that too. The appointment says presented to us here, all in favor?
Yes.
And you opposed?
No.
Okay, passes on a four to one. Light and Power Board vacancy, there's been some discussion about that, and there were three applicants that were interested in this position, and tonight, I would like to appoint with, with your approval, Tamla Spicer to that position on the Light and Power Board. And we'll open it up for a particular discussion, so first we go with the public, if anyone from the public has something to say about that? And if not, then all right, we'll move it to the council.
I know Tamla from from and, and around town, she has excellent organizational skills, I think she'd be a very good board member, so whether or not she's a man or a woman, I think she will do a wonderful job, she's a good person for the job, so I would support that.
Mr. Mayor, have you anything, any expectations here about balance? I believe that one of the reasons this name may have come forth is due to balance between agendas, is that, is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That is, has been primarily the mayor's effort to add a little balance, I'm very proud, if you noticed, two editions ago in Lowell Letter, and 25 years ago, the Lowell Rotary Club sponsored their very first woman, a lady named, yeah, Linda Sezak, and that person was sponsored by Jim Hodges 25 years ago, as the first woman to the Lowell Rotary Board. It's no secret that I kind of like women, I married one, and so I think that there's some people opportunity that's been long overlooked in this community, towards looking to all of our resources, and so that, that's my personal thinking on that, and that's all me on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have commented to this item, there was some input that you had under public comment from Mr. Teelander, and within that public comment, and I greatly respect Mr. Teelander, and we've had some wonderful conversations, and, and over the course of this next year, I hope that we have more conversations, my goal is going to be to encourage more civic involvement, more public participation in process here, but as a part of that goal, I'm also looking at maintaining stability in our public discourse, and I don't think it's right or fair to throw out accusations, and as a part of your public comment, you accused me of- And as a part of your public comment, you accused me of some type of discrimination because the mayor had told you that he had discussed this appointment with you. And first of all, I think that that's an unfair accusation. And second of all, I'm not going to sit by my lady and let accusations be thrown around anymore. So, thank you.
Well, the mayor has made an appointment. Is there a motion to accept this appointment?
I'll move to accept that appointment.
Do you second?
We do.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded to appoint Tamla Spicer to the Lowell Light and Power Board. And all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes four to one. Thank you. And with that...
I move that we go on to closed session regarding union negotiations that is allowed under the Open Meetings Act at 7:31.
And if there's no new update, I...
We need a second for, for, we can have a discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Now, discussion?
If there's no, there'd be discussion, I do, I disagree. I don't think we need to go into it. The last two times have basically been nothing. We shouldn't even have had the last one. So if there's no new update, I don't see why we're going to take such a...
I think there might be something to, but...
I think we'll find that out when we get to closed session.
All right. Been moved and seconded to go into closed session at 7:31. For this, we need a voice vote.
Councilmember Schwab?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Alta?
No.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you.